All right, good evening, members of council.
I don't see you on yet.
I don't see you.
Hold on.
Bob, are we on?
Nope.
Oh, yeah. There we go now.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Work session, the Pecosin City Council for Monday, January 27th. Not a lot of public here, but the school board is behind us hiding in the back as we talk about the budget. And we've had a work session with the school board, so we understand their needs, and I'll leave it at that, his truly needs. And I've asked Randy to try and bring council up to speed on what we're putting together for the 2015 budget. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you sort of what's emerging. You'll notice this is a little bit different than when we've done it in the past. And what we thought we would do is sort of share with you sort of what it looks like, what kinds of things we're thinking about, what kinds of things we're challenged by. We're not -- we don't have answers to some of these questions yet, but we wanted to share with you and share with the community. Appreciate the fact that the school board is here as well, showing you what it looks like this early in the process. This work session, of course, is also designed to set the stage for a pre-budget public hearing to listen to the thoughts and suggestions of members of the community that's later on in your agenda this evening. What you have before you is a longer narrative. If anyone who's watching at home would like to view it, it's available on our website. And the PowerPoint is just excerpts from that, but the entire text is on our website if you'd like to see it. Teresa? And Bob? The good news here, and you know, I'm searching to find good news, is that we are exactly where we thought we would be. You'll recall in last year's budget, you all made significant strides in eliminating the structural imbalance that was in our budget. And in the current year's budget, FY14, the structural deficit, which had, in years past, had well exceeded $1 million, had been reduced to $295,000. That's in the current budget right now. A lot of things went into that. Prudent fiscal management on your part, position eliminations early on in the city, continuing reductions and rightsizing in the schools' budget. And I say "right." Right is in conforming to the amount of money that they have, not right because it makes sense educationally. We've constrained the budget over the years and refinanced our debt and taken advantage of excellent bond ratings that we've been able to obtain. And all of that has combined to bring us to this point where the structural imbalance coming out of the recession has been reduced to this. So if this was all we had to talk about, this might not be so bad. But budgets build on themselves, and we're going to talk about what's coming next. In the budget that we're beginning to plan for, as you will recall, in addition to that $295,000 structural deficit, we have the first of two steps up on the debt that had been refinanced and restructured to help get us through the recession. You'll recall, the principal driver on this increase in cost is the elementary school that was funded some years ago, and the fire station number one debt. And through restructuring and taking advantage of a favorable market and an outstanding bond rating, we've been able to spread out some of those debt service impacts. Well, there, now is the time. And the first of two of those step-ups, I'll cover the next one in a moment, is coming next year. So you combine those two, and now the structural deficit has grown from approximately $300,000 to approximately $900,000. And just so that I can round out the thought, the second of two step-ups required because of that debt that we had for the school and the fire station comes the fiscal year after the one we'll be working on. And that is another almost $300,000. So if you forgive me for rounding, we currently have a $300,000 imbalance in the current year. It will grow to $900,000 next year, and then it'll cap itself off at about $1.2 million in fiscal year 2016, if nothing is done to address it. That's a very simple way of looking at it, a very complex issue. Next slide, please. One of the things that is important to us, and you've mentioned it already, Mayor, as we look at our structural deficit on the city side, the school board has experienced its own structural deficit over the same recessionary period. The good news and the bad news is the current projection of additional cuts that the schools will have to make to account for the impacts of the state budget, and also a handful of non-discretionary cost drivers is in the area of $400,000. That is, $400,000, which is currently going to other aspects of education, will need to be pulled from that to deal with these new issues, some on the revenue side, some on the expenditure side. That's on top of approximately $5 million worth of cuts that the school board has had to make over the past several years. That in spite of the fact that every year, city council has increased funding, we've talked about in the past, we can't bail as fast as the state is pouring in the bad news financially. Next slide, please. One of the things that we've been working on since the recession hit and city revenues went backwards is trying our best through a number of methods, including economic development, to bolster our local revenues. And they are coming back, and that's the good news. But the issue that we're confronting here is that, at the moment anyway, forecasted natural revenue growth is essentially equal to the anticipated cost increases for health insurance and your increased cost for VRS. And that does not include the schools, and they face their own challenges in that regard. And that is part of that embedded $400,000 number you saw before. Next, please. Just so that we have a purpose of comparison, again, the entire recommended budget is in flux, and then whatever you do with it, of course, is your decision to make. But if you assume for the purposes of this discussion, a definition of base budget, which is a level tax rate, same general level of government services, you assume that for a second. The budget that we will be looking at has no local money for ongoing CIP projects. I'm going to show you what that means in a couple of minutes. That is not unlike the situation we have found ourselves in, really, the entirety that I've been here. But the types of things that are on our capital improvement plan are not just things like a new public safety building, but its roofs, and its buses, and its public works equipment. It's that type of thing that concerns me the most. And certainly, there is no ongoing local money for any of the schools' items as well, including the middle school project, whether debt-funded or cash-funded. Next up, please. I'm not going to read the intricacies each time. I'll probably go short, but essentially, at that definition of the base budget, until such time that the structural imbalance is eliminated, there is no revenue, nothing really, to support any new positions or investments in county programs or county staff, nor is there any money at that, based on that assumption, for any meaningful increases for schools. Each year, we've tried to do what we can, but I don't anticipate, at least based on the base budget concept, that we're ever going to be able to begin to roll back the reductions that the state has already caused in the school budget. We'll do our best continually to mitigate what we can, but in order to roll it back, we've got to go beyond current year mitigation and go back to restore some of the things that have been previously eliminated. Next, please. This is a question that I always get, and I wanted to address it here. We have been collectively good stewards of the money that you've entrusted us with. And each year, we've been able to return money to the general fund balance, which we've been fortunate is beyond that, which is minimally required by your adopted fiscal policies. We call that excess fund balance. It's not excess in that there's not a need or anything like that. When I use that term, that is simply dollars beyond the 15% requirement. We do have enough money in the fund balance to address that. And like this year, we put $295,000 in to the operating budget. We have enough to round up to that $900,000 next year. Assuming we don't make that imbalance worse in the 15 budget, we have enough. The problem with that, or many problems with that strategy, one is we can't duplicate it the following year. At that point, we'll begin to pull it out significantly faster than we add it. And as we have constrained budgets each year, the amount of money going into the fund balance at the end of the year has been impacted by that as well. And based on that very simple approach to the budget, that still means there are no significant increases for schools, no significant anything in the city government, and a zero-funded CIP. All of those things would add to that number. Next, please. As we go through the budget, and Teresa and Judy and I, Rob and work on this, these are the questions that we have. We have many questions, but these are some of them. You know, we've got a number of economic development projects that are working their way through the system, or have not yet made it formally into the system, but we think they're coming. What are they? What's their value? When will they be built? Will they have service impacts? You know, for example, a store has less of a service impact than a neighborhood in terms of school and other things. And we also don't know what 2015 or 2017 real property assessments will be. We know that the rate of decline has slowed, but I heard today at a meeting that one of our neighbors, who does annual assessments, is still projecting 1.46, I think it was, reduction in their assessment for the coming cycle. So we don't know how that will impact us. Next, please. Other questions, and these are ones that you all ultimately will have to think about and put your mark on as well, but as we work on a recommended budget, we think of questions about, you know, new economic development when it does come. Optimally, would it be for new investment in something that we're doing as a city, recognizing that our CIP is unfunded, our schools are in a hole not of their making or your making, and certainly, there are some things in the city we could do? Or do we put that new growth towards structural imbalance correction? Unless some other decision is made, it goes to address the imbalance, because we need to take care of that in order to sort of move on to our future. At some point, we've got to get that imbalance corrected. What should our approach to future property reassessments be? I know, in good times, you like to, everyone does, to equalize that rate down, just as we did up when the market went the other way. But in a time where you have a structural imbalance, do you fail to do that, or do you fail to fully do that? These are, again, questions that sort of roll around in our mind. And the last on this slide is, you know, at what point do we begin to restore ongoing funding to the CIP? We have none there now, and we really need to get back to it long-term. And at what point do we do that? There are a myriad of choices, most of them, you would recognize, as very high priority stuff, all of which is, right now, not something we'll be able to move forward with. Teresa, next up. Other questions that roll around in my mind, and I'm sure they roll around in your mind as the budget moves to you. Should we increase local school funding to address previous and current state reductions and other mandates beyond their control? Should there be investments made in additional city programs or increased staff? I could very easily give you a list of five or six positions that I think are vitally needed, but we can't afford them. What's significant -- here's another one. You know, we've talked primarily about addressing the imbalance in the context of additional investment, potentially long-term, and our working assumption has been essentially the same government, just a little bit tighter bell. But another question that's always there is, are there things that the city is doing, whether major programs or departments, that the community would feel comfortable eliminating in order to address the imbalance or to fund higher priority items? That's another thing which rolls into our thinking, and the community thinking, and your thinking. And the last point on this slide, how much of our structural balance, which is growing to $900,000 next year, should we address with the 15 budget? Next up, Teresa. All right. We've got a couple of slides to show you, and then I would be glad to entertain questions and to get any feedback that you'd like to provide. Just a few things to show you that put some more meat on what we were talking about. Tried not to give you a whole lot of this this time, simply because the budget, at this point, is conceptual, and then those concepts get applied. And here's an application of those concepts. You can see a projected budget. Again, it's based on that base budget concept, which was on the second or third slide. Out over the years, you can see the debt service increases. This is net change, so that $600,000 that you see, that second item down in the first numerical column, that persists out all the rest of the years, it's just not a further increase. So there is a little bit of trick to reading this. You see, on the next line, projected group life insurance and VRS increases. You see the beginning of that large unfunded mandate associated with TMDL coming towards us, which falls, at this point, long-term, in that category of CIP projects for which we have no dedicated funding. You see a couple other minor items, and then you see, just to point it out, there's a number in there for schools. That admittedly is a placeholder, doesn't mean anything other than that's, based on that series of assumptions and those revenues coming in, that's the amount of money that's left over. Lot of work to do to decide what that should be, so that shouldn't be anything other than just a note for you. And then you see our revenue streams, and you see the amount of fund balance coming that is necessary. And you see some, towards the end, you see our revenue, projected revenue growth, which is not too far from VRS life insurance and health insurance in the first series of numbers. And you see, at our level, anyway, the working concept of the Big Woods land sale, which is the intent to purchase that you approved in December. I know that that hasn't been formalized yet, but we're planning for, conceptually, at staff level, and that's how we're funding that TMDL item up there. If that does not happen, then we're going to need to deal with TMDL some other way. Next slide, please.
Oh, sorry.
Wanted to show you a couple of other things, and this is largely for the public that may be watching and may be providing us comments. These are the projects, and in your packages, the charts with the specific years and amounts, but these are the type of projects that are in the draft CIP. Look, very, very similar to those things that were in the CIP when I got here, because we haven't been able to do many of them throughout the recessionary period. These are there, oftentimes, I get questions from members of the public about sort of, is there a plan for, you know, improvements to lights at First Field? Well, yes, there is a plan. Unfortunately, we don't have any money identified at the moment, but you can see the kinds of things that we're planning. And then the next slide, Teresa. If we can, and as you know, we have no ongoing money to support any of those. If we took simply the excess fund balance that we think you have right now to dedicate to next year's budget, that's what's left on the list. That's what we could fund. It's about $900,000 of a combined cash CIP request of about $5.5 million. That's it over a five-year period. I'm not presuming that you would spend the money, and I'm not presuming you'd spend it on that, but I think that's generally representative of how quickly that list shrinks. And then, do we have one more slide?
No, that's it.
All right. Well, if you take those four items, and then you apply simply the ongoing cash that we have, we don't have any money for any of those things. So as my staff and I work on developing a budget, those are kind of the high-level concepts that we go through each year. Are there critical capital things that we absolutely must do? Are there investments that are just absolutely so important that they may need to take the place of something else? And at this point, we'd be glad to answer your questions, noting that we don't know the answers to some of those questions that we posed. And we will try to work on a working assumptions for each of them as we work towards delivering a budget to you the second week in April.
Thanks, Randy. Let me thank you for probably what is the simplest thing, which is framing the main questions that council needs to be thinking about. I think he's captured that in the budget sessions that we've had in the past, as this current council and even the council before. Preparation of the budget, it hasn't been a lot of line item by line item look, because we have such a good staff at taking all the fat out. I think this budget year, council needs to really focus on those questions and coming up with their personal answers to those questions. And then, I would challenge us, I think we're going to need to have an off-site to have spirited discussion, because I think it will be, at times, spirited discussion about what our priorities are, because I can tell you, Randy and I had a, you know, he shared some budget possibilities. I'm not sure he's prepared to put all those out yet, but I can tell you that if we, the city of Pecosin, are going to continue to excel in education, we have one big bruise that's coming that we need to start dealing with now, and that would be the middle school. I think we've all talked about it. We've talked about it with the school board. I think the school board is understanding that this is not something we can solve this year. But to me, it's going to be kind of a multi-stage process, which is, first, we're going to have to protect the bond rating that we worked so hard to get. And to protect the bond rating that we worked so hard to get, we're going to need to solve the structural imbalance, one way or another. And I would encourage us to look at that as the multi-year, the two years of structural imbalance. I'll share with you that we have, and I know that many of us have had this conversation before, in 2008, when the economy turned, we did everything that we could to minimize the impact and the unknowns on the citizens and not pile on to an already bad economic condition. To do that, we refinanced once, then we went to New York and we got a favorable bond rating because we're good stewards of the public's money. But we've never come to the table to pay for those. And I would tell you that six years later, that I believe things are better. There's truly a federal budget this year, and there's actually some projects that are funded this year that I'm quite frankly surprised at. And we have to make the city whole. I think that this is something that we are going to have to really struggle with as we continue to fund a school system that excels at what they do, at a city that wants to be around for a long period of time. I think if we just handled one thing this year, which would be the structural imbalance, whether we handle this year's or we handle two years, that is our main thing that we've got to do to make a dent in the other downstream decisions of how to fund the middle school, or how to offset what the state is throwing at the school system. I think we all recognize the city is doing everything it can to maintain city costs, and the biggest strain that we have on our budget is what the state does not appear to be doing for education. And I'll reiterate one more time what was on that slide and what we've talked to the General Assembly about. $5 million. Pecosin is probably the primary person that you can say, what are you doing to education? $5 million lost in five budget years from the state. Okay, so that's basically $1 million a year, and it looked like that may have slowed to half a million dollars this year, but you've already taken $5 million out in five years and no plus-up, no swing the other way. So we can't, I think Randy's right, we can't bail at all. We've done what we can to offset it, but what we need to solve right now is the structural imbalance to make ourselves healthier as a city and then to move forward. If we're going to have any options at all about moving forward, that is a major step. So, but I encourage us all to look at those questions, and Randy, I would, you know, I know that we're going to have the public hearing tonight. We're going to get to hear from the public. I'm hoping for more than what we've gotten in the past, but I think we'll probably have little. But I would like council to go off and just discuss those questions so that you get a sense. If you will set that up for us, off-site, early February, gives everybody a, and I say early February, you know, it's within reason. I'm sure we can come up with a commonplace time that gives us February to have those discussions and debate. When does your budget come out?
Essentially, April 1st. It's a little bit after that, but it's finished by April 1st.
And then we can pour over the budget numbers themselves, you know, and, but that gives staff a lot of guidance on what to put together, so that we're not shooting the messenger, but I appreciate the message. And I really, and I mean that. I appreciate the message, and I just want to make sure it's understood. Comments of other council?
I think both Randy and the school superintendent have done an exceptional job with the things being as tight as they are to have maintained what they have, with what they've had to do it with. And we've got to do it again, it looks like.
It's tough. On the side? Okay.
Just, if you could clarify for me, Randy, I think you said that you could get to the structural imbalance with the general fund, but then you fall into that 15%?
I'd be glad to clarify the point. What we've used in the past, well, every year during the recession, is that we have inserted some of our excess fund balance as a means to maintain operating budgets, and it helps us do the things we've done with the schools as well. And we have, taking the very simple approach, your excess fund balance will exceed $900,000 at year-end, we estimate. So you could choose, for the purposes of FY15, to basically take money out of your savings account and put it in there.
Is that in excess of the 15%?
Yes, sir.
$900,000 in excess of?
Yes, sir. So the real problem there, in the short term, is the following year, one, that will be depleted, and we'd be lucky probably to have $300,000 in the fund balance, in the terms of excess. At the same time, we're facing the same deficit, plus an additional $300,000 on top of it. So we're looking at the prospect, unless it's dealt with some other way, we're going to have substantial decisions to make. And the fund balance provides lots of things. It provides you the ability to sort of even out the rough edges, as you did this year. That was two cents worth of tax increase that was not required, or the equivalent cuts to pass the budget this year. It is also our first line of defense against a disaster. You know, at the 15% level, our guideline is 12% to 15%, but from a cash flow standpoint, we're almost at 15% where, from a cash flow standpoint. So for all practical purposes, if you forgive me, that's where we need to be in order to not have to worry about short-term financing and continuing to pay our bills. So if we have a NORIDA or something like that, where we need to go into operations days before an event, and sometimes weeks after, you know that we don't always know when and if we're going to get a federal disaster declaration. That could be three weeks or two months later, when we've already expended hundreds of thousands of dollars. We can't. We can't afford to wait to service and to help our citizens, so we don't. And that money comes, that's another place it comes from. And if we don't have it, we're going to, we'll still do it, I'm just not sure how we'll afford it.
So since we put that 15% in as a regular day-to-day operations, has that kept us above zero?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's working well?
It works very well.
But, you know, and I would encourage council to think this way, if you solve it this year, it's just waiting for you next year. If you solve it that way, you took all your money out of your savings account at home, and you knew you were spending more than you were bringing in, then you're basically going to deal with it, and you're going to hurt yourself on the bond market.
Just pushing away the inevitable?
As long as we maintain the 15%, we'll be okay.
As long as we don't ever do an improvement to the middle school, and I mean ever. Okay, and I think that's not, like I said, I think what council has done, and I speak for myself, and this is in no way the individual members of council, but for six years, we've been able to keep the recession from hurting our citizens. And we've done it in a way that we haven't really stepped up and made the hard payments that we needed to make. The downside of that, the upside is that I feel like we've made it through the worst of it. And I do think the worst of it's behind us. I'm not saying it's over, but the worst of it is behind us. What that has done to us is it's given us a flat, basically debt projection for 20 years. So there's nothing else. Once it goes up $900,000, the old debt structures, you'd see decreases, and you could actually level it out by doing other programs. For 20 years, you're going to be flat across that number. That means nothing for 20 years. That's a lot to ask. So, kind of got to think about that, and that's why I said, I think the fundamental questions are where council's got to focus. And, you know, I'm going to encourage Randy to present something that, you know, that basically takes care of that structural imbalance, and then we can debate it.
Is this a reassess, this is not a reassessment year?
No, sir, it's not.
But we did, you did pulse the assessor, and he said there's no reason to believe that we're in the negative. I think we're basically at zero, is what he's thinking.
I think that he hopes.
I love this, but basically, we're at the bottom.
I wouldn't be surprised if what we were generally seeing at this exact moment in time matches sort of what we heard from that other locality today, but there's time to go. And things are reversing. As you'll recall, our community was fortunate that a lot of the impact on residential reassessment didn't hit here as fast as it hit in other places. It had hit a full three years where I worked prior to coming here, before it hit here. So it came late here, so we may be emerging a little bit later than others. I mean, it's certainly turning in the correct direction, but the question is, how much and when, and it's too early to tell.
Man, you know, the one piece of good news that you didn't mention, at least, you know, in years past, we've had VRS and healthcare costs, at least for the city, on top of that. So at least some economic development offset, so let's just hope that continues and push for it to continue. It's not just hope, but it's, you know, the city's doing a really good job, and appreciate everything that you and staff are doing in that regard. Anything else of council?
Could I just ask one question to give advantage of the fact that you all are here?
Sure.
With regard to your suggested offsite, are you thinking about that in the context of an evening, or would you prefer to do that on a Saturday afternoon kind of thing?
Thoughts?
I think everybody likes evenings.
That's fine.
Yep.
Better.
We will poll the council tomorrow's available dates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, secure from the work session, and see you in just a couple minutes at 7:00 as a regular session.